I'd like to call this meeting in order.
Education to order. Chris, could you call the roll, please?
This is Detsel.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Mr. Detsel.
Here.
Mr. Harlow.
Here.
Mr. Heather.
Here.
We have Boy Scout Troop 710 in the audience tonight that is working on their communication badge, so if you'd like to come up front, I believe they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Let me just come right up here. You guys start.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, in the free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I apologize to them a little ahead of time that unfortunately they're at a, it's going to be a lengthy meeting, so they're really going to earn that communication badge.
(Laughter).
Plenty to write about.
Yes.
These are the approval of minutes from the regular meeting on January 19, 2016. The Treasurer and Superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the minutes as listed.
Motion second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions or additions to the meeting minutes? Okay, Chris, call the roll. Motion passes five to zero.
Five to is a special meeting for January 25, 2016. The Treasurer and Superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the minutes as listed.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any comments? Motion passes five to zero.
Next is a special recognition. I'll turn it over to Paulette Crowley.
Well, if we could delay that for just a few minutes, there was an accident out on Pippin Road, and we're waiting for a few more of our players to get here who are going to be recognized this evening, so if we can wait a little bit and move them further down in the agenda, that would be great.
No problem.
Thank you.
We have plenty.
Do they update committee reports and updates then, Pam?
Yes.
And then come back to it.
Okay, let's go to the legislative report. Michael?
I do not have a report per se out of what's coming out of Columbus, but I did receive the Ohio School Board Association 2016 Legislative Platform today, and by the next meeting, I'll highlight some of the things in it.
Okay, thank you. Tonight for our Student Achievement Liaison Report, we have students from the Butler Tech Criminal Justice Program that's over at Colrain High School that I believe are going to present for us today.
My name's Sergeant Jeremiah Morgan, and I took over the Criminal Justice Program this year at Colrain High School. I just want to tell you, thanks for having us tonight, taking an interest in these students. Colrain High School, Northwest High School, through Butler Tech, we appreciate you having us. I'm going to give you a quick overview of our program and then allow you to hear from the students. We have a junior, senior program. We do have intro classes. Junior program, what it is, is they basically have an introduction to law enforcement. Everything that you will learn in the Basic Police Academy and private security there introduced to their junior year. We expound on that in their senior year. They actually take the direct course through Ohio Police Officer Training Academy, pat downs. Pat downs, traffic stops, things of that nature, and they expound on that each step. They start on case law and why they can do what they do with pat downs. They go into handcuffing techniques, felony techniques, and they go into full-fledged traffic stops and understand every aspect of that. So senior year, they then, at the end of the year, they then move into forensics. This year, we actually reversed it because it was my first year. They learn everything that you basically see on CSI. They learn how to cast footprints. These are the ones that the students have done. They learn how to cast the footprints. They learn how to use luminol to bring blood back if someone had been at a crime scene and tried to hide by wiping the blood away. They could use the luminol, then hydrant on any ransom notes to find fingerprints. And so I'm going to first let one of our seniors, this is Mr. Neehouse, who you'll also see in a minute with the football team. He signed with University of Tennessee to play football. I'm going to let him demonstrate a proper pat down and let him talk for just a second. So, Mr. Neehouse, if you would step over here. Do you care to?
Sure.
Do you care? Appreciate it.
A Tennessee gun, one of our Gators.
He's just going to demonstrate the verbal skill.
Sir, can you turn it off for me? Can you put your hands behind your head? Spread the feet, please. And then lock your fingers. I'm just going to touch you down real quick. When we start, do you have any weapons, anything sharp, anything that can state me?
No.
You sure?
Yeah.
I'm going to check you, and we'll find anything you have.
This is one of our best, so he'll definitely find it.
Are you checking?
Anything up here?
No.
All right. He's clean. Okay.
Any money?
The reason we like to quickly, I'll have the box set up here for you. This is Mr. Thomas, this is one of our students. The reason we like to show the importance of pat down, Mr. Thomas is just an average high school student with a T-shirt, jacket, baggy pants. We like to show if we don't do pat downs the proper way, what they could possibly miss. If you'll just sit those on the table for a minute, Mr. Thomas.
Wow. Wow. And he's a skinny little guy. Oh, my gosh.
How do you keep his pants off?
I don't know.
We just like to do this as a bell ringer, as a hook at the beginning of class. We talk about pat downs. We talk about all the things that they could miss, and Mr. Thomas demonstrated this for us the last time. Is that it? We have it? We have it all?
That's it.
He's forgotten everything.
About 15 pounds lighter.
Nine handguns, three knives, and an M16. So, as you can see, you sure that's it? Looks like a normal, everyday stoop, okay? And we use this when we first start pat downs, just to show them how important it is to not only miss not the weapons, but also needles. Air was a huge epidemic, they could lose that as well. I'm going to have Mr. Neehouse do a forensics for you real quick. If someone would like to put a fingerprint on this, I don't care who, just put a good fingerprint on there somewhere. I won't vote. Okay. In the crime scenes, what the seniors do is they do a lot of fuming. We use superglued a few. They do a lot of fuming. They do different scenarios, but with this one, we use a chemical that we call a camper, and it's really no different than what we use in a breathing machine, aerosol breathing machine. And with the camper, I'll let you demonstrate, I'll hold it. We use the ash, these are in hard-to-reach places, we use the ash off of the, use the ash off of the flame. Explain to them what you're doing now, Mr. Neehouse.
The ash is floating up to the plastic, and it'll reveal any fingerprint or title, and you'll be able to dust it off and see what it is.
This is a little bit more of a hard-to-reach area. You can't get your fuming chamber in there, you can't take the wall with you, maybe a pipe from a burglary. So we use this ash off of the camper, which is not a harm to the atmosphere, it's not a harm to anyone around, it's just a different technique that's used when you go through CSI that they'll teach you. Then we'll allow him to dust that off. See if you got the fingerprint there.
So he does know how to dust.
Okay.
And it's quite a few, but yeah, it's mostly from me touching it, and.
Mine was right in the middle.
Yeah, and there's yours.
So it does a great job, it does a great job doing that, so. I want to go ahead and allow some listeners to tell you briefly, since we're short on time, a little bit about the program. Mr. Neehouse, you can speak.
Hello, my name is Patrick Hill. I'm a junior with Criminal Justice here. One of my favorite things of the program so far would be us learning about the case laws and how they were created, how they can be used to justify our actions in the field. Say, we get called out to a store, there's someone acting really suspicious, but we can't really act on them to arrest them, to remain for questioning, but we can use the Terry versus Ohio to do a frisk, to pat them down for, say, tools to break into the shop or to prevent any further crimes of any sort. And with that, we can help prevent crimes from occurring in the area or anywhere in general.
Hi, my name's Paul Anderson, I'm a junior at the Colrain Butler Tech. One thing I really like about the program is that how hands-on it is. Like, we take, oh yeah, traffic stops, we go out to the cruise vehicle, and what I really like about what Sergeant Morgan did with the program is, like, a simple traffic stop, we break it up into several pieces, like, a couple days, we work on our approach until we perfect it, and then with the pat downs, and then I like how he shows us a lot of videos, so we know what will happen when it goes wrong.
Okay. All right, thanks. The one thing we're really excited about, the last thing, is in the state of Ohio, we're actually the first program to use this technology. It's a hot debate among all police departments right now, and that's a police officer body cam. Police officers, police departments all over the United States right now, not just Ohio, are deciding whether or not they need to wear a body cam. Some say yes, some say it's invasion of privacy, some simply can't afford it, so they're waiting on maybe funding from the state, and we know how that can be. But we have two of these in our classroom, got them at a phenomenal rate, so therefore when they do traffic stops, the students wear these. The one actually doing the traffic stop wears it, the backup officer wears the second camera, so they see it from two angles. We then take it into the classroom, instantly download it into the laptop, and they can watch it on the smart board and critique themselves, see exactly what they've done right, what they've done wrong, and how to improve on it. So I think we've got a good future here with these young men. Thanks for your time, we appreciate you having us.
Do you guys interact with, like, our local police, Colrain Township, and you have them come into classes and stuff like that?
We do. I have several speakers. The FBI agent, just from my background, 20 years in law enforcement, so I've got some pretty good connections. FBI, Secret Service comes in to speak with money laundering. Colrain Township is becoming a good partner with us. The school resource officers are coming in, helping out. So far, it's in early stages, I've only been here a few months, but so far, I think we've made leaps and bounds, and I think we've really developed a great partnership. I just told Mrs. Abudakar, Supervisor of the Satellite Programs, we actually have a good partnership going with Cincinnati Financial, as well as Kings Island to look for possible instant job placement. When they graduate, you cannot be a police officer two or 21 and attending academy. We have several that have just sworn into the military as military police. If that's not an option, and they do want to pursue criminal justice, that's great. For those that may want to have a summer job quickly, Kings Island is going to start hiring our students that are 18 when they graduate their senior year for instant job placement into the security world, so it's a great resume builder, and why would they learn, so.
How many, how many students are in the program?
Right now, we have, we have, we have two intro classes, and those are first bell and second bell, and each one of those has around 29, 28 each class. Right now, we have 16 seniors and 12 juniors, and I know we're really primed, I'm speaking with Mrs. Abudakar, we're really primed for a big junior class. I think we have 29 signed up already for next year, so it's really growing, so, yeah. The word's getting out, I think it's a good program, and a good group of young men and women at Colrain and all those high schools.
Great.
Now, Kristen, are you seeing the kids from any other, the Butler Tech School Districts coming for this, or are these just our Northwestern Colrain kids?
Just our kids. I mean, we have Criminal Justice at U.S.A. as well, so we do have some students that have been choose to go up there, but I think overall, we have a huge increase, and it's thanks to Sergeant Morgan and how some work that his kids are doing, and they're getting ready to start their safety committee in the community of our Colrain High School, so I'm excited about that.
It's good stuff going on. We created a safety team, and we work a lot of events, sporting events, wire, band concerts, where there'll be a safety committee, there'll be a courtesy officer, whether or not they're just patrolling the parking lot, watching the cars, could be just simply helping someone disable into a vehicle, or just being a liaison, explaining where the restaurants are, where the water is, and giving them simple directions. It teaches them to give back, we believe in our program, that certitude is huge, you're a public servant, the power is given to you by the people, and that you are to give back because that's who you are to serve. That's what we're really trying to do, and these young men and young women in our program have really latched on to that, so.
Do they get any opportunity to interact with the middle school kids?
Not so far, but we've actually talked about several scenarios where we have them come over or us come over and kind of show them on a career day what's awaiting them if they want, when they get older.
Right, it'd be a nice partnership.
Yeah, definitely.
Do they get any advanced, since they've had the two-year program, if they go into the police academy or whatever, do they get any advanced placement or any, any advantage over somebody with no experience at all?
I will say this, we've developed, we're developing a partnership, and I spoke with Mr. Travers over at Butler Tech, he does the adult fire and police, and what we want to be able to say is, when you graduate from high school Butler Tech, going into adult Butler Tech, that little brother puts out good product for big brother, and he's starting to recognize from seeing that we've gone to the police academy twice, and we've done the driving simulator, video game, shooting simulator, he's been very impressed with the students. So of course, when they put that on their application, that's going to be great. My grandfather, my dad, my uncle, me, my brother, two cousins, we're all police officers, that's pretty much all we know, and I did not have the training that they're having now. The forensics alone, I can tell you right now that the seniors, and we're getting ready to go to a big competition, Skills USA, the seniors have all the forensics that you see on CSI, there's 14 chapters, they've completed all of it flawlessly, and now we have three that we've selected to compete on the Crime Lab Competition Team. They are getting more crime scene collection and expertise and knowledge than I ever had until I went through the CSI school, which was eight years into my police career. So they're leaving this program, after two years of junior and senior program, they're ready to go. They should have nothing that surprises them, they should be advanced when they do go into the police academy, they should be advanced over most of the other students.
And, Mr. Neehouse, also, our students that are in the completed two-year program get articulated in CTEA credit through the state of Ohio to take to any university that has Criminal Justice program in addition. If they wanted to go the secondary route, where they went into another program.
Yeah, I think, college credits already.
It sounds like a really good program.
Next year, we additionally are getting a Butler Tech employee at our middle schools also with the recruiting process, but the problem is, we need parents to realize how valuable these programs are. If you're in the 40 to 51-year range, like myself being on the 51 side, we have a different picture of what vocational education is. These kids are leaving here, can go straight into college, they are very successful, they have a bright future, and that's all their programs, not just this one. So we have kids who are graduating with nothing in their pocket in terms of what I want to do with my life, where do I want to, what I want to major in, what college do I want to go to. Through a Butler Tech program, you have a program that you train for two years, and it gives you a direction for where you want to go and what you have to do afterwards. I believe these kids can attend two years of Blue Ash for UC, and then they are ready for the police academy and become a full-fledged police officer, if I'm not mistaken, so very valuable classes at Butler Tech in our buildings.
It is, it is. I wish I had this going along with, I grew up around it, like I said, was able to take my father, my grandfather's brain, but we tell them, don't think Criminal Justice is a police officer. We have a lot of young women in our program that don't really want to be police officers. They want to get into criminal minds, they wanted to get into criminal psychology, they want to work in forensics and the crime lab. So in our Criminal Justice program, we don't just push police and security. There's so many areas you can go into, prosecution, criminal law, being a defense attorney, prosecutor. There's so many different realms, especially now with forensics making a big splash on TV. So some of these young men and women really want to go off into the forensics aspect or the criminal minds, so, and they have those opportunities, and our curriculum covers all that, so I'm excited to see what it, what it holds for, and how it continues to grow.
I think, you know, Tom, we talk about getting that extra person, which I think's huge for middle school next year, but you're right, I think parents in our era have a whole different outlook of vocational program. Even if, and this might be something you could discuss at your monthly PTA President's meetings, even if the PTAs, when they're having whatever event they're having, if every couple months, they bring in one of these presentations, this didn't take that long, but you've got a captive audience to see, see this, and there might be, you could even go down to the elementary, that parents start thinking about it, the kids might sit there and think, wow, that's really cool, I want to do that, and then they start asking more questions, but, I mean, I'm sure, I'm not, I'm not kidding you guys, have to do something all the time, but I, I mean, I think their presentation, they did a great job, and to come into, even if it's before Founder's Day or whatever, you do some of these different programs, but get them in the middle schools. I think you're really going to drum up a lot of interest because it's, it's awesome what you, what you're able to do.
Yeah, I'm excited about the future of this program, and all the programs we've brought up. Being Criminal Justice, we usually provide doughnuts, but we couldn't get that doughnut, so we're apologizing.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for having us, appreciate it.
I think we're going to turn it back over to Paulette Crowley for the Colrain High School Football Team recognition.
Great, thank you. Well, we had a very exciting fall this year at Colrain High School with their football team, and to introduce the accomplishments of the team, we have Coach Bill Joseph. Bill is also the Assistant Athletic Director of Colrain High School, and he would like to introduce our head coach for us.
Good evening, and thank you to the board for having us here, and thank you for taking the opportunity to recognize our student athletes for their accomplishments on the field this fall, and thank the community as well for all of your support throughout the season. It was a truly special season for us, you know, one that ended with us making our sixth trip to the Final Four as a program, and our first in 10 years, so our first since 2006, and so definitely a lot of memories were made, and I want to thank everybody for their support along the way, and again, for having us here this evening. With that being said, we have several members of our team here, and our head football coach, who was also named this year our Enquirer Coach of the Year, our GMC Coach of the Year, and the Southwest District Coach of the Year, and Head Football Coach, Tom Bolton.
I'd like to take a quick second and thank Coach Joseph, Phil Joseph, for all he does. Has a young family, assistant AD, football coach, social studies teachers, works tirelessly at what he does, so a big thank you to Coach Joseph for, for all that you do for me and for the kids. Absolute thank you. I echo Coach Joseph's, thank you, this is always a special night, it never gets old. It seems like we're here every year doing this, and that's pretty cool, so it means we have a lot of good players, and all those accolades that I'm able to receive is because of all those great players and a, and a great community and things like that. I will say, you know, Nathan wanting to be a police officer and whatnot, he's got a little four- to five-year delay in that process because he'll be attending Tennessee to play football, so he's got to get through that, and probably when they're done with him, it'll be tough for him fitting in a police car, so we'll, we'll find out real quick. Yes, exactly, you're going to make them bigger now, yeah. So with that being said, our, our first thing we're going to do is recognize the team this year. I will, I will say this, one quick story, they were, I guess I could say, they were terribles freshmen. They, what, what, four games, you guys? Was it four? And I could remember, well, I didn't remember until they, until they reminded me at our, at our senior dinner, that I brought them in and politely told them how bad they were. They're about three-quarters through their freshman year, let them know they're going to be the first team to ruin the GMC streak and all this kind of stuff. Well, long story short, shows you how much I know. So they went on to, to make sure this was the 16th straight year that we've won the GMC, and they've gone as far as all Corain teams except for one, and that's, that's quite a journey, and that goes to their, their perseverance, their hard work, their dedication, their commitment by themselves, their family, the community, and all that kind of stuff. What I can tell you about these kids is they are, they are a reflection of this township, of this community, of, of the Corain side, of the Northwest side. They're, they're, they're tough kids, and much like our community, and they've worked for everything they got, and that's, that's how they're going to do things, and I think that's a huge reflection of, of we here at Corain and Corain Township. So I can't thank those guys enough. So with that being said, if you guys that are all here, you know, we could fit everybody in, but a lot of them, if you guys could please stand up. Ms. Crowley, are we going to get a picture out there? I don't think they'll all fit, or do you want them to all come up? Come on up here.
Mrs. Detsel's going to come around and Mr. Bowling, and they're going to present that plaque.
So go ahead, come on up, guys, we're going to fit you in.
Paul is in the back, the door is in the front.
It's a relative term.
Okay, Mr. Bowling, I need you around a friend here with Coach Bolton, who will come and accept the plaque first.
This is probably the first time you've been shorter than we know, some of these guys, isn't it? Where do you want?
Accept the plaque.
Accept the plaque.
Mr. Bowling's hand. There you go. Now, we're going to have Mr. Bowling on the end, and Mrs. Detsel, we go, Coach on the end.
There we go.
There you go. Okay, nice smiles, this is not the.
Yeah, it's not the game face guy. Awesome guy. You have seen a great guy. Come here. You guys come on here, you've got to stand in front of everybody. Come here. He didn't know I was going to do this. He's going to make a scene. Ah, he's going to have to accept, Paul couldn't be here, so he's going to accept for Paul, I didn't tell you. Okay, our, our first young man, the other great thing about this, is, am I allowed to come up with this?
Yeah.
You got, it's all good, right? You do realize that the football coach, that's a crutch, me having, you don't like that, okay? So the other part of this, which makes it so good, is we have a lot of special players, and they're all special, but we had three young men that were named All-State. The great thing about this equation, two of the three are back, and, and a lot of great players are back, so hopefully we'll be back here again next year, just another step, okay? And they've all made their promise. So our first All-State recipient is a, a young man, Amir Reeve, who will fortunately be back next year, played cornerback for us, defensive back, Mr. All-Everything, and he's a little overwhelmed right now, he went, he's got about 30-plus scholarship offers now, and it all really was about the last couple weeks or so, so it's, it's a good problem to have. He and Dad and I talked to him, we said, you got to go for whatever, and you got to tell people know, narrow it down, so Amir Reeve, our first All-State recipient. Yes, sir. Did I hear that he got a letter from the Florida Gators? Oh, yes, yeah. Did he get one of those? Mr. Detsel's favorite team, the Florida Gators, have offered, so. All that Nike stuff and all that. And then our, our next young man unfortunately could be here with us this evening, so his buddy, and I don't know if a lot of people know my man Noah here, Noah is a, is a junior student assistant for me, and he loves the camera, he loves the limelight, matter of fact. A show called Game Changers came out and did a, did a thing on me, and they got to meet Noah, and they did another one on him, and long story short, mine didn't win the Emmy, his did. Noah is a junior student assistant for me and he loves the camera, he loves the limelight, matter of fact. A show called Game Changers came out and did a thing on me and they got to meet Noah and they did another one on him. And long story short, mine didn't win the Emmy, his did. And he is a huge success for it with all the things that he battles in terms of his health and things like that. And, you know, he's probably, and I say this, it's kind of touching for me, but he battles every day. And he's probably outlived his life, expectancy four times over and he keeps doing it and it's the point now, he misses days and things like that. I shot him a text, I'm like, Noah, freaking out, you okay? He just says, yeah. I'm like, that's all I get. That's all I get anymore. So he's like a son to me. My son couldn't be here, so he's going to accept it for my son, Paul. The next young man is Mr. All-Everything. If you watched us at Corin High School, he's as good as it gets. This is the first time I've ever seen him slow. He was a little late getting here tonight and that's the first time I've ever seen him slow anything. The best way I can describe him is when we were going through the process of evaluating him, they would always ask me, you know, the character, I've always told kids, I never lie about your character and your grades and your ability. And has the grades, has the ability obviously, but his character is tremendous. And he's obviously made me a better coach and I think he's made me a better person and I will sorely miss him. A bit like a son to me, like they all have. And, you know, people always ask me, say, how fast is, I always say this, I'll leave it, says, you have the next guy's speed. And they said, what's that? I said, he's always faster than the guy next to him, that's all that matters. So he'll be attending Iowa State University, he's going to go catch the best. He had offers from all over, Georgia Tech wanting me to come play quarterback, a couple of schools wanting me to come play defensive back and things like that, which I thought that was one of the most ignorant things that ever, you want the ball in his hands. And he's going to go to Iowa State, which is, it's all about, you know, football and academics out there and he's going to have a huge career. And hopefully one of these days, they're all going to get there and they're going to all make all that money and build a new, a big new equipment. So take the pressure off you guys. So, but with that being said, our other All-State performer, Deshaun Tate Jones. It's as easy as that, guys, how about that? Once again, thank you. Guys, we'll go outside, we'll take a picture out here, we're ready to go. Guys, thank you for your time and enjoy your evening.
Thank you very much.
Those last two presentations are always the highlight of our meetings. We're going to, yep, we're going to go ahead and jump back to Butler Tech's report.
Just a short one, we had our shortest meeting of 20 minutes at our last board meeting in the eight years I've been the rep. So we just, the big thing is we voted unanimously 10-0 for our new superintendent at Butler Tech, Mr. John Graft. He is actually the current Butler County ESC Superintendent and he's coming over to Butler Tech now. He'll be starting August 1st. And Todd, I told him I'd be getting with you so he could come and he's very familiar with all the Butler County schools, he just hasn't been to our schools to come to Corin Northwest for a visit and check out all the classes. That's it.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to introduce Crystal Muntney for our principal's report, Corin High School.
Thank you. Good evening, board members as well as administrative team. First of all, on a personal note, I would like to thank you for your cards and well wishes in the passing of my mother. She was my best friend and very precious to me, so I appreciate your support as well as again, the cards and the accolades that you sent me. So thank you very much for that. Okay, can we make it a little bigger as we rotate through? Okay. A clicker, absolutely. Okay, well, this is my second year as building principal at Corin High School and it is definitely a pleasure to serve the staff as well as the community of Corin High School. And so in my second year, I looked at our goals from last year and started to think, okay, what do we really need to focus on? And it really came down to two main points, and that is discipline as well as academics. So first goal was to decrease the number of discipline referrals as well as suspensions by at least 13% and expulsions by at least 20% through the use of PBS and progressive discipline. And then the second one was to improve academic results with the use of the RTI process while closing the achievement gap. So the new changes that our administrative team implemented to pursue these goals were first of all, increased focus on positive behavior expectations and progressive discipline, and also the RTI process through weekly 20-minute advisory times, and then finally quarterly reports. So the details of this is first of all, daily discipline reminders. For the most part, I do our daily morning announcements and I remind students of behavior expectations. It is my strong belief that if I share with students every day what we expect, then they will do exactly what we expect. So we have daily reminders to our students and the staff does the same. They remind them before they begin lessons, expectations of the lesson, as well as conduct during that lesson. The second thing is Team Corin. It was very important for me to ensure that the staff was on board. And so this year, we implemented hashtag Team Corin. And so that is pretty much our rah rah rah. We have posters and banners in our staff workroom, we got shirts made, and there are constant reminders through our weekly newsletters about the expectations of Team Corin. And that is supporting one another and making sure that we are striving toward our building goals. The third item is through the RTI process, and that is our response to intervention. And so last year, we did an RTI process and I can be very honest, it was not very strong. And so this year, we had to ensure that we were constantly doing it and one way to do that was to carve out time in our advisory. And so last year, we did advisory about twice a month. This year, we moved to every single week, 20 minutes. And so our advisory teachers do weekly checks of students' grades and they start to identify students who are not performing well. So students whose grades are C and below, then we start to identify them. Obviously, our DF students, those students are tracked, they are submitted to our RTI team and we are in the process of evaluating them and making sure that they have strategies in place to ensure their success. The fourth item is through quarterly reports. And so board, I believe you have a copy there, tracking teacher progress reflection is And I will speak in depth about that in just a minute. And then finally, quarterly staff surveys. I felt that it was very important to continue to ask the staff, how are we doing? How is it going? And so as a part of the quarterly staff surveys, again, they do them quarterly and they are very simple questions such as rating the value of our teacher-based team process, which is a district goal as well as an initiative. Also, rating the climate and culture of the building, including student performance, behavior expectations, and then staff communication and department-wide support. And then we also allow for them to submit any type of comment. So three very quick questions that come out quarterly and staff is also able to list any type of comments they would like. The quarterly surveys for the staff are completely anonymous. We do it through a Survey Monkey type and so we have no way, absolutely no way of tracking the staff. So it's very important that we do that because staff can be very honest in telling us what they feel needs to be done so that we can continue to improve the work that we are doing. So as for the quarterly reports in which you have before you, this is tracking teacher progress. It is a reflection sheet. Through our evaluation model, Marzano suggests that teachers track student progress. And so I believe that if you're tracking student progress, you should also be tracking your progress as a teacher as well. And so these quarterly reflection sheets, we did our very first one in November and then we did the RTI process the second quarter in January. But teachers had to identify the students in their classes who had a 69% or below as well as identify where they fell in our subgroups, whether they're African-American, male, female, LEP, economically disadvantaged, or students with disabilities. Then I wanted the teachers to reflect on the strategies that they have given these students to help improve their grades. And those strategies are listed there, such as parent contact, after-school tutoring, probing, establishing a positive relationship, et cetera. And so teachers were to list those methods there as well as identify any types of strategies that they plan to implement to ensure success of that student. And then obviously, we had to address if there were any attendance issue students, that we made sure that those students were documented as well and making sure that we're reaching out to them on the attendance piece because obviously if they're not in school, then it's very difficult for the teacher to implement any types of strategies to ensure that student success. So we did, again, the reflection document to allow teachers to reflect on the work that they were doing. And we received many, many positive comments, really stating, hey, this was a good opportunity for me to look back and see, wow, I really need to work with my economically disadvantaged students, or wow, I need to make more parent contact because I didn't do enough of that first quarter. The next item are the quarterly staff surveys. And again, this is our opportunity where we survey the staff anonymously and find out how they are feeling and what things that we can improve. Once we receive those quarterly surveys back, we share with our leadership team, our building leadership team, and we have a discussion about things that we can improve, whether they listed questions or concerns in our communication or bring up points in regards to student behavior, discipline, hallway behavior, et cetera. And so through that, we start to list ways for improvement and then in most cases, we implement those immediately. An example is when we have our weekly advisories, we were sending out multiple emails about what teachers should do on that day of the advisory, including some emails that went out that same morning of the advisory. And so obviously in the surveys, teachers said, uh-uh, this isn't working. So what we did was we created a Google Doc that is constantly running and it is live where teachers can always go and check and it's updated. And so what we've noticed now is that many teachers pull up their Google Doc for the students to see on the smartboard and then they go through the announcements and grade checking during the actual advisory time. And so finally, I'd like to share with you the results of all of this. And so again, the two areas that we really wanted to focus on this year, discipline and academics. So this information is taken as of February 8, 2016. The suspensions at that particular time, 276 for this school year, that's down from 351 last year this time. This is a decrease of 21.4%. Our goal was 13%. And so hopefully if we can keep on this trend, then I see no reason why we will not hit 30% by the end of the school year, which is far double than what we had set out to do. And then expulsions, 25, down from 63 from last year, and this is a decrease of 60.3%. And again, our goal was to decrease expulsions by 20% and so we far exceeded that. And again, hopefully if we continue on that same path, then we hope to be 75% down from last year. Academics, this year we have identified 513 students, school-wide, who were on the RTI process. These are students who are not performing well academically or they are struggling with some other social matters. We have students who have incarcerated parents as well as students who have had parents pass away or who live in foster care, so very different circumstances than the traditional homes. And so those students are also in that group of students that we are tracking and identifying ways to help them get through the educational process. Through that, our failure rate is down by nearly 8% over last school year. And so we have continued to track these students as well as the failure rates. And so when we started this process and our goals for this year, we did not per se say what we wanted our failure rate to look like this year because we were just kind of saying, we just want it to be better than last year. And so obviously even 1% is better than last year, but at this particular point, we are down 8%, which we are very proud of and we hope to continue to move that number higher where our failure rate becomes lower through the RTI process as well as discipline. And so as an administrative team, multiple times, we've asked ourselves the question, which came first? The improvement in discipline or the improvement in academics? And so I'm a researcher, but that's probably beyond my level of research to say, hey, because our discipline numbers have improved, academics have improved, or academics have improved because discipline has improved. But nevertheless, we are very fortunate and grateful that we can present these numbers with great pride this evening. So that's it.
Crystal, on the surveys that the teachers do anonymously, what percentage are you getting those back from all the teachers?
Not so much, about half. But what we feel is that those are the ones who really, really want to share very positive things or really want to share areas of concern. And so the staff know that they are coming out at designated times in the calendar because we align them with their report cards when they submit report card grades. So we continue to see that staff are submitting them, not 100% though.
Why do you think that the other half are not submitting?
Well, either they are not submitting them because they are content and don't feel as if they have anything to say, or unfortunately, and this is just the reality of what we do, that they might feel that what they say is not going to make a difference either way. I'd like to think that that is not the case because I have worked to establish a very positive culture in our building where staff can first of all, come in person to share their concerns, but then second of all, obviously anonymously should be that much easier. So could very well be they just, it slipped their mind or time and they don't feel that they need to do it for whatever reason.
Can we get the results at the end of the school year?
Absolutely, absolutely. We're crossing our fingers that they are still in line.
Okay.
Crystal, I do believe that you're on the right track with the discipline does create a better learning environment. My one son actually took the math classes at Corin because he said it was too disruptive than the general classes.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah. So I think the children do want to learn in a calm environment.
Absolutely. I agree. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll move into reports from employee organizations. Is there anyone here for certificate and licensed employees? Okay, at this time, we'll move into community communications. I have requests from three. The first one is Daniel Malloy to talk about issue three.
Good evening, thank you for your time. First, as a Corin grad, I would really like to, opportunity to come in here and see the good things that we do. As an advocate of the community and growing up here and now working for it for the last almost 27 years, it's nice to have some ammo to put out there. It's really cool what our young men and women are doing and seeing how many people that stay around and grow up here and go to school here are actually successful here. So, you know, for Coach Bolden and everybody in this room that grew up here and went to school here, this is cool, this is fun. So I'm here on behalf of the trustees, Mr. Rowan, Mr. Birkenhour. I'm here to just give you some talking points on issue three. Issue three is a road, parks, and senior center issue that is being presented on March 15. The whole goal is to provide a reliable infrastructure to our community, that is the 112-plus miles, the 260-plus acres within our park system. The community is being asked to make a decision, consider a yes or no vote depending on depending on where they stand, to generate roughly $2.1 million to move forward to take care of those roads and take care of our parks, as well as our community center. It's a five-year issue. And the reality is, there's been a levy, there hasn't been a levy since 2001 for our road department and taking care of our roads. We approximately have 332 of 447 of our roads that are raided in poor or serious condition. And this is all done by computer, by people a heck of a lot smarter than me that know a lot about what this responsibility is. But, in 2001, we were rating at about 71%, which was satisfactory. And we're down in the 40% for the over umbrella of our roads in 2016. So, again, if you live here and you drive on our township streets, it's a concern. But, there's also an issue out there in relationship to, if there's 112 road miles of township, then there's probably another 112 miles of county roads, and is there any impact with that? The reality is, is what we learned in this process is, and again, I'm not an expert, I'm kind of on the police and fire side, so I'm really proud of these young men that were standing here. That's really cool, because they're Colrain folks, and hopefully, they'll come back, and you know, you'll see them in a uniform running in our community in the future. But the reality is, what does that mean for us? It means we can leverage money. We never had the ability to leverage money for a long time. We can make application for large grants that can partner with the county road system and do streets like Springdale Road or East Miami. Or if there's a project that's coming up between, like Pippin Road, between Galbraith and Springdale Road to do, if there's a connecting roadway that's a township road, we can partner in that to get those roads done, and we can leverage our resources and things of that nature. But, the reality is, it's an opportunity for the community to make a decision. And I, Dan, I'm not going to keep you here all night, but the reality, we're just asking you, take a moment to consider the facts, do some research, and make a decision personally what's in the best interest of you and your family and your community. So, if anybody has any questions, I'll do my best to answer. I ask you, I appreciate your time, but, yes, sir.
What sort of cuts has the township made in the past, you know, 15 years since that road levy expired?
Mr. Harlow, what happened before the last couple of years? Being on the police side, I really, I'll be honest, I didn't worry about driving, except driving on those roads. But we've eliminated probably seven full-time employee positions in the township, and those have been operational folks as well. We're down four full-time employees in the road department, but haven't been filled, because this is an issue. The senior community center is affected. We've reduced staffing there. And our parks, you saw what we went through last year with our parks. And, right, wrong, or indifferent, there was an issue that we were trying to figure out a way to move forward with taking care of our roads, and decisions were made. And we're going to see what the town, what the community has to say. Yes, sir.
I live in Greene, so this, I don't have a dog in this fight. But, just curious, because we always talk about, what would the levy cost the owner of a $150,000 house?
Sure.
What are we talking?
The cost is about $70 a year for the owner of a $100,000 home that would start in 2017. And one of the things that we're actually advertising is the benefit that not only has gone along with the Romke Waste Recycling Contract for Springfield Township Ross and Colrain, that'll actually provide for a $54 per year savings to the average community member. And then, your levy, actually, that, you know, was put into play, actually reduces the millage and the responsibility for payment. So, that's about $78 a year, just between those two things. If, again, if you're looking at what dollar for dollar you're paying now compared to what you're paying ahead. But you know, there's always going to be people out there that have their own perspective on this. But, the reality is, we get to make a decision what's in the best interest of our community. And walking in the little window, we make our choice, and hopefully, we'll be able to move forward. So, I'll leave some information here for you, you're certainly welcome. Community will be mailed out to the mailer here in the next couple of weeks, just the same flyer. But again, I'll just ask that you consider, you know, getting informed, and just make an educated decision on what's in the best interest, so.
What day is that?
March 15, March 15, yes, sir.
Dan, what is the, you mentioned that there's three appropriations there. You got roads, parks, and community centers.
Correct.
What, is it going to be divided equally, or?
Well, the main function, the main purpose is to take care of these roads. There's such a...
Work condition?
Thank you. For the roads, that needs to be jump-started and really pushed forward. The community center is, it generates approximately $140,000 a year. The savings there is, or the benefit there immediately is that that money will stay in the community center and be able to continue to partner with the YMCA, continue to do the programs that are in there, and not pull that money from the community center back into the general fund to push toward roads. And then, the parks is, let's get the parks back and running. Let's make sure they're taken care of, with the ball fields and things like that. But then, if it passes the removal, that parking pass expense for '17 and moving forward. So, that's an additional $10 a year that people won't have to pay. But, that's the goal. The goal is to get the parks back to where we're running, the ball fields are moving like we're moving, and we get back to, I mean, the goal ultimately is a best-in-class community, right, wrong, or indifferent. We want people to be proud of where they work, where they live, and where they raised their families. And, you know, it's just like coming into this room. There's a lot of names on these cards that, you know, grew up here, went to school here, and they're still living here and now serving in the community. And that, we do that. We stay here, you know, we hang around. We continue to take pride in where we are. And as Tom said, we are Colrain, and we take pride in that. So, you know, again, I appreciate the board's opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
I just want to say we're not all life, some of us came here by choice.
Okay, Robert Martin wants to talk about new buildings.
My name is Robert Martin, and I was pleased when Todd asked me to serve on the building committee. I also served previously on the report card committee. I think I'm the senior citizen representative. He won't tell me that, but I think that's the case. But I do have three children, three grandchildren in the system. And in the process of serving on the building committee, I was told at one of the meetings that there was a possibility that they would move the sites of the new schools. And that gave me grave concern, because I do believe that the town was promised certain things when the levy was put forward. Obviously, there were certain economic elements to the proposal, and there were certain academic elements to the proposal. And part of the economic appeal, obviously, is that some of the areas, especially around Struble, for example, where I live, is in need of some economic input. There's a lot of empty land around there. The old building supply facility that's been vacant for, I think, well, I've been in town for six years, it's been vacant those six years. There's a lot of empty land around there. Aldi moved out, on Galbraith. The homes that get sold in that area tend to get sold to investors lately and then turned into rental property, which is not the best situation. So, I do believe that when you guys put out your frequently asked questions back last February, one of the issues there was the K-5s principle, which I think is a great principle, as opposed to K-8, and the neighborhood school concept. The situation that I was told was that there was a possibility that Struble site would be abandoned for a school site, and instead, the facility built over at Mercy. And again, I understand things change and promises can't always be kept. But, I think when you do change your mind on something like that, there has to be a good reason. And some of the reasons that I've heard put forth are not necessarily good reasons. The John Rose situation, John Rose being closed off and the access to Colrain Avenue, that was certainly known before the levy was proposed. So, that cannot be put forth as a reason for the change in sites. The access to the Struble site can also not be put forth, because obviously, all the access points were known previous to the levy. So, if there are other reasons out there, I'm a reasonable person, and the people that I, that live in my community are reasonable people, and we certainly would understand if, for some reason, the building can't be built at Struble. But those reasons have to be put forth, and they have to be put forth clearly. And they have to be rather convincing. I've heard rumors, and I don't want to believe them, because frankly, putting it at Mercy would put one of the rumors to bed. One of the rumors I heard was that, well, you know, we don't have any new schools in the better parts of Colrain. Frankly, where I live isn't the better part of Colrain. I'd like it to be, but it's not. In fact, when the township put forth their proposal for an income tax in the town for certain employees, you'll note that they left out the northern part of Colrain Avenue from Galbraith, because obviously, that area is in need of economic input of a positive nature. So, they weren't even going to tax the people that worked for those businesses, because they want to rejuvenate that area. Frankly, a new school at the Struble site will do tremendous good for this part of Colrain. So, one of the rumors I heard was, well, you know, part of the better parts of Colrain are kind of feeling left out here, and we need to put schools where they're more visible. Well, Mercy certainly isn't even part of Colrain at this point, so you'd have to annex that from the city and Springfield Township or whatever. So, again, if there are reasons beyond, you know, trying to put them in a better part of town, or because of John Rose, or because of access points, then let us know what those reasons are, and I'm more than willing to consider them. But, I must say, I'm disappointed, because obviously, I would have voted for the levy, and I thought, being completely honest, which I tried to be, as one of the candidates for president said the other day, and got all sorts of trouble for saying it. But I do try to be honest, and I would have voted for the levy even if they had abandoned Struble, because I do think it's important. I've got, as I said, I've got three grandkids in the system, and I do think the new schools are important. So, what I ask is, tell us the reasons why you're thinking about this, number one. And number two, you have to make a firm commitment that Struble will not become vacant land. If you want to put recreation fields there, so be it. If you want to put senior housing there, so be it. But it cannot be left as vacant land. That would be the absolute death knell for the area that I live in. So, that's really all I wanted to say. I do have, I have a lot of faith in the board. Again, you have to change your mind on this issue. I'll swallow hard and agree to it, but please, 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 commit to not leaving that land vacant. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Rich McBay, site selection.
Thank you, President Dussel. It's a very important decision you guys are making, you know that. And I don't think I want to be in your shoes. One thing I would ask of you is that you make a balanced assessment. By that, I mean, I looked at the website, and I see this analysis around why it makes sense for Mercy. Now, in the business world, you'd have a plus and minus analysis for both sites. And kind of picking up what Bob said, yeah, I think it would be good to say, you know, what is the plus and minus for being at Struble? And what is the plus and minus for being at Mercy? Look at it a balanced way to make your decision. I also would say, it's important, I think, to get some help assessing what the costs are going to be to get into these sites. I'm not a civil engineer, but you have some architects here, but I think we ought to look at cost to get into Struble with a new moved building versus the cost to get into Mercy. Look at the economics there and say, if it's a wash, it's a wash, but if one is significantly different than the other, then it's more help in our decision-making process. The other thing I would say is make a realistic assessment of the sales of the Struble site. A realistic assessment. How long, what do you think you're going to get for it? And why do you think you're going to get that? And when do you think it might be possible that you get that? To pick up on Bob's point, if you're going to put something else in there, if the school district is going to put something else here, that's an outlay of more funds, maintenance costs, and all that kind of stuff. I, for one, voted for their levy for a lot of reasons, as many else did. But part of it was this whole idea that the rising tide lifts all boats, and that part of town, if we take that school away, is likely to see continued erosion and property loss. And I don't think it would be a good thing. The other thing I think needs to be looked at is the traffic flows need to be understood. I've heard some talk that the general site being located as it's located versus the one on Banning, the traffic would be more problematic coming out of Struble than it would be at Banning. And that can be addressed in a simple, you know, not expensive, but traffic study. Look at the flows, see what the impacts are going to be on the residents. I think it's important to make that assessment. The other thing I would have you think about is, if you're at Mercy, what's going to, who's going to be at that site after hours? Because I think there will be children flowing into that site after hours, especially if part of what you're doing is going to enhance it with playgrounds and, you know, basketball courts and this kind of stuff. So, you'll have to pay attention to that, because I'm sure that people will flow into the school who are not in our district, and that in itself will present some issues. And that might not be the same in Struble, since it's a captured neighborhood. The only other question I have is not at Struble, it's on Pleasant Run. I'd heard that you were thinking about possibly relocating the Pleasant Run element to your school. Is that still something you're considering?
No, I'm doing a presentation later, no.
Oh, well, okay. The other thing I would say is, do you plan to reach out further into the district to get more input from folks? I heard maybe you were going to have some meetings to, you're going to do that. Hey, listen, I'm your lead man. Okay, I encourage you to take the time to make a thoughtful analysis of this. It's a big decision, you know, and I know you're doing that. So, I encourage you to open it up, share the data, look at it in a balanced fashion, and let us rally around your decision, rather than saying, you know, those guys did it again. Thank you.
Thank you. As always, we definitely appreciate your input and taking the time to be here and being part of the committee, because I know both of you are part of the building committee, and we truly appreciate that as well. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to...
All right, we are on approval of superintendent's consent items. First is 11-1, financial reports of the treasurer. In accordance with Section 3313.29 of the Higher Revised Code of the State of Ohio, it needs to be made that the treasurer submitted a financial statement of receipts, expenditures, balances, investments, and the regular funds of the Board of Education for the period of the fiscal year 2016. The treasurer and superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the financial reports as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Okay, Chris, call the roll, please. Motion passes, five to zero.
The next item is a certificated licensed personnel item. It is retirements and resignations. You will find two acceptance of resignations, one acceptance of tutor procedural resignation, one acceptance of tutor resignation, one acceptance of home instructor procedural resignation, one acceptance of extra-duty resignation, 10 acceptance of athletic event worker resignations, and 19 acceptance of extra-duty procedural resignations. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated licensed personnel retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions on the retirements or resignations?
That 10 athletic, I know some of them were procedural, but is that just?
That's just event workers, so we need ticket takers, run a scoreboard. It just happens after every season.
Anybody else? Okay, Chris. Motion passes, five to zero.
Next is classified retirements and resignations. You will find eight acceptance of classified resignations, one acceptance of CED, assistant procedural resignation, and one acceptance of classified substitute resignation. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions on the classified retirements and resignations? and resignations? Motion passes, five to zero.
Next is a fiscal item, it's vendor contracts, in compliance with Ohio Revised Code 3313.33, attached is a list of vendor contracts requiring board authorization. There is a total of seven vendor contracts, superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education authorize the vendor contracts as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, questions or comments? Motion passes, five to zero.
All right, the next is a resolution declaring the intent, intention of the Northwest Oakwood School District to delay levying a half mil maintenance tax to pay for the cost of maintaining classroom facilities. I'll turn this over to Amy.
Okay, as part of the OSFC project, if we were to enter into that for possible K building, this just leaves our options open. If you were to enter into a project, you have to levy a half mil to maintain your buildings for 23 years. What this resolution is doing is to delay that decision until we decide to actually enter into a project, and then the next resolution would be a resolution to instead, to use alternative funding. So instead of putting a levy on the ballot for our community to vote on for the half mil, it is to just use as an alternative funding, to use our PI levy, which is, we use a half mil of that anyway for permanent improvements, so we could just put that in a separate fund, what we're currently doing now, and just continue to use it for maintenance, and it works out perfectly as the half mil requirement. So the first levy is to delay the decision until we do decide to do the official entering into the project, and the second resolution is, if we do decide, that we would use the alternative funding of what we currently collect and not have to levy a new tax for our community.
The superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the resolution declaring the intent of the Northwest Oakwood School District to delay levying a half mil maintenance tax to pay for the cost of maintaining classroom facilities as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, are there any questions? Okay, Chris? Motion passes, five to zero.
The next is a resolution authorizing the Northwest Oakwood School District to receive confirmation from the Ohio School Facilities Commission to provide alternative funding for state-assisted classroom facility projects in connection with the requirement to provide a half mil maintenance tax for the 23 years. Amy, anything additional? Superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing the Northwest Oakwood School District to receive confirmation from the Ohio School Facilities Commission to approve alternative funding for state-assisted classroom facility projects in connection with the requirement to provide a half mil maintenance tax for 23 years as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions? Motion passes, five to zero.
The next category is general business, it is an agreement between owner and architect for permanent improvement projects, you will find the standard AIA contract for summer PI work with Roth. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the agreement between owner and architect for permanent improvement projects as represented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, are there any questions on the agreement with the architect? Motion passes, five to zero.
All right, the next area is general business also, it is agreement with Green Township for a track at White Oak Middle School. We are excited to announce that Green Township, in partnership with White Oak Middle School, will donate $112,000 to put in a new three-lane track in place around the White Oak Middle School football field. This will allow the athletes to practice at their home facility, and will open up a track for the surrounding community to use for walking or running or any type of exercise. Our plan, as this is phase one of the project, Dustin and White Oak Middle School put this plan together. The second phase is, as you go out of the front of White Oak Middle School, you have the round area, the parking lot, you drive around, there will be a body weight, physical fitness center put over there. With middle school kids, you really don't want them lifting weights, but every machine that's out there is a body weight, so if you're doing pulls for your back, or if you're doing bench press, it's only of your own weight, the object is to benefit the community members also. Right now, we have to bus White Oak Middle over to Colrain High School Tuesday, two days a week for track, they would be able to stay there and track as marked, practice there. So it's a combination of helping the kids out at school, plus helping the community out, and creating a shared collaborative union between a school and the district that it resides in, so we're very excited about this, it was very generous of Green Township, so attached is an agreement with the Green Township for the track at White Oak Middle School. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education accept the one-time contribution of $112,000 for the purpose of constructing a three-lane track on the property of White Oak Middle School for use by the district and citizens of Green Township per the attached agreement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, are there any questions or comments?
Todd, is there going to be a phase two, you said, what kind of cost is that, or what we're going to do, or...
Paula, chime in here if I misspeak, but I believe it's anywhere between 60 and 80,000 additionally.
I don't think it's quite that high, but right now, phase one is all we're concentrating on, they have asked us to come back next year with phase two to see if they're able to help us here. But there were several school districts in Green Township, so they put a playground in at Oakdale Elementary, they helped the South High School with their renovations of their track and the wall around the track, and they haven't been asked how they could do for us, but we're very...
Tell them thank you, absolutely.
Chris, did you...
Yeah, Paula, the, I know that the facilities have been lacking there, having run track at White Oak, we used to run, you know, we ran everywhere, guys falling in the creek, you know, that all happened, but three lanes, is it possible to make it five lanes so we could use it for track needs, I mean, is it possible to add on, or just not enough space?
No, there's not enough space there without doing a lot of ground movement, and that is where the cost comes in, and so we did hit parameters with the amount of money that they were going to spend, and so Mr. Gary felt that the three lane would still be hugely beneficial for his kids to be able to practice passing with Tom, running on the relays, we'll also have the high jump and the long jump pits will be put in, and those will be regulation sized, so we have that opportunity. So right now, White Oak Middle School students track in cross-country, are bused to Colrain High School to do their practices every week, this way they can stay right on campus. PE teachers are excited that they'll be able to go out and use the track as well, and if you're familiar with White Oak, they are right in the middle of the neighborhood, so they know, they run on all four sides, and if you've gone up there in another month or so, when it's still daylight at six, you will find quite a number of union members utilizing that facility for their exercise.
Paula, what's a timetable on this, the timetable, when would it be completed?
That will depend on how fast Chris can get it, get a final price and a breakdown.
Be given by August first.
Yeah, and it's not going to be your official track, even with three lanes, it, we just couldn't build it up, no.
I would just like to personally thank the Green Township Board of Trustees, over the 19-plus years I've been here, Green Township truly has partnered with this district numerous times, and I think that's the way we should be doing it, so this is just a win-win for everyone, so I'd like to personally thank them. Okay, Chris, call for a vote? Motion passes, five to zero.
The next item is a certificated licensed personnel action, you will find four approval of certified leave of absence, two approval of tutors, one approval of a home instructor, three approval of schedule of salary placements, 13 approval of extra duty contracts, 10 approval of athletic event workers, two approval of volunteers, and one resolution to hire non-licensed coaches for several openings. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certificated licensed personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, are there any questions or comments? Motion passes, five to zero.
The next item is also under certificated licensed personnel, it is revised job descriptions, you will find the HR Director and Assistant Director job descriptions, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the revised job descriptions as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any comments? Motion passes, five to zero.
The next category is a classified personnel item, you will find seven approval of initial appointments, one approval of a CEED assistant, one approval of classified substitute to be paid at various rates, and six approval of leave of absence. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any comments? Motion passes, five to zero.
The next item is a curriculum instruction item, it is the out-of-state field trip request, the Northwest High School Show Choirs requesting permission to take 43 students to South Dearborn, Indiana, to compete on March 5, 2016, no school will be missed by attending this Saturday competition. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the out-of-state field trip as listed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions or comments?
Break a leg.
I'd like to wish them good luck. Motion passes, five to zero.
The next item is student services, it's the first semester harassment, intimidation, and bullying report, first semester results of the formal HIV complaints for the 2015-16 school year. This is for information. Any questions? By law, we're required to update this at the end of each semester.
Okay. What's the next?
That takes us to our next item, which is general business, fiscal year 2016 summer permanent improvement projects, this is for information only, you will see attachments that show where our summer PI funds will be issued, I want to point out that, as we currently stand, that Weigel has a listing for a roof repair, this is considered Weigel, so the school that is due to be demolished and go into a new school in two years is not the roof we're repairing, it's the back structure of this corner and this roof we're currently under. As of right now, we don't see it as something immediate, but it is on our list.
Actually, we pulled it off today, we're going to do an IR scan of this roof, and see if we can make it put in under your protection.
And I just want to remind everyone, as with all repairs, we will check the prior warranty prior to making in repairs to see if it's still covered, we did check the warranty on this roof, and it has expired. We also will do as little as possible to the five buildings that will be demolished and combined into our new schools, but we will keep them warm, safe, and dry, and we'll monitor all five until the new schools are built. At the next board meeting, we will go for action to move forward with our permanent improvement items. Excuse me, my computer is a little off-target tonight, so let me go back. All right, so the next general business item is the master facility plan update, acquisition of additional property. I was hoping that Amy and them could put up their, the sheets that were attached, is that possible?
I can't read that one.
I can hook my computer up if you want. Oh, mine's actually won't work, it's a Lenovo, I don't have the adaption, but I can, I just don't want to read to insult people's intelligence, but I will be glad to go over all of this. So, this ties back in to the great points that Rich and Robert brought to our attention that we are aware of. I want to let the public know that we, first of all, and the board, that PRE is no longer a site we are looking to place alternatively. There was a, let me go back to why all of this discussion occurred. So our goal is to put the district in a position so that when we need to build new buildings and replace some of our older buildings, for example, Colrain El, Colrain Middle eventually, White Oak Middle School, Colrain High School, Northwest High School, Pleasant Run Middle School, those schools that are going to need replaced, we're going to need property for that to occur. If you look at Colrain High School, you're pretty much landlocked at Colrain High School. Unless you're willing to take your athletic fields and just get rid of them to start a new site development, there's not enough land to build on. So, the whole initiative that started this was, let's look at what we have in terms of property that we own, what is the ability to get rid of it or move it, so that brings up the Welch property, the Beavis property that's been vacated for two years, and then any other property that we would vacate because of the new building, and obviously, out front is one, but this property's going to stay intact because the Board of Education is attached to it. That still means that we may not tear Weigel down, we may decide to look at other properties, so when I say other properties, we have two major pieces of property that are worth a lot of money, Pleasant Run Elementary School, as I've said in the past, and Houston Early Childhood Learning Center. Why are they so valuable, because of their location. Pleasant Run L is right down the street from 275, easy access, Houston is right next to Colrain Avenue, so very viable for business to be interested in and want to move into. So, as we move forward with all of this, we would look at possibly moving the Houston Early Childhood Learning Center over to Weigel, and then possibly having that available land to sell, or rent, or land lease to another company or someone else, with the whole goal in mind to create funds to keep us moving forward. It's not going to be cheap to build new buildings, we know that if we look, like I said from the beginning, if we want to try to use ALP funds, which currently run about 17 million, if we qualify for everything, we think we will, if we look at the $3 million that we put toward renovations for those two schools, plus some other renovations, we'd hold back, we'd be up around 23 million, that would leave a small amount that we have to raise in order to build a K through eight campus. And I've heard rumblings that folks are scared of a K through eight campus, that doesn't mean that kindergarten through fifth grade interacts with sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, they are one building which saves the district money and is economically more advantageous to us, but the kids are separated, they have different drop-off areas, they have different pickup areas, and there is no way that the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade go back and forth in between the buildings, so that concern can be taken out. A lot of districts are going K through 12 sites, they're going K through eight sites, our goal is that when we look at that, obviously, we would get community feedback and let them know what we're doing, but our ideal is not to stick K1 and 2 and 3, which scares some parents to death with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders with their squirreliness and running around and everything else. The advantage it gives us, though, is that a partnership can be there where eighth graders could come down and help kindergarten, first graders read and do a lot of different things academically. But, one of the sites that we recently have started talking about is the Mercy site, and so, I wanted to, there's no way you guys can pull it up, if you pull up the board meeting, can you pull up the next site, the map of the Mercy site? All right, so the Mercy site is a really large site, actually, can you shrink it a little bit, Chris? If you think visually where it is, it's good, right there. So, here comes Pippin Road, this is where the hospital is currently being demolished, they have different parcels of land, I believe there's 68 acres total, Chris, or something around there. The part we're looking at does not have to be annexed, it is owned by Colrain Township, it is this bottom portion, so here is Pippin, and here is Banning coming here, and it's this bottom portion here, houses, there is also a nursery there, we have been told by our legal folks that they are aware that this property is for sale, and it will have to be vacated in order for it to be used. The owner is Powell Crossley, so why are we looking at it, and why are we concerned about acquiring a new site? Well, yes, we can build on a Struble site, and there are no problems whatsoever, we can have traffic patterns that will come out, is it the most ideal situation? No. We do have an access road that we can take out of the back of Struble, but I called around to get some estimates today from talking to certain board members and other folks, and we know that to put a bridge out of the back end of Struble and have an exit for the buses to go out the back is around $150,000 by itself. So if we are going to add that bridge, that's going to be an expensive piece to us, and that doesn't, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, that doesn't even include the blacktop getting to it and then from it, per se. So, that's the first estimate we got, we would hopefully we could get a lot more estimates and get that price down, but that could be an expensive piece, that's going to add on to, if we feel like we can't exit out of the front, and we would have two different patterns, if you look at the Struble site in the way it's supposed to be built, the buses are on the backside, parent pickups on the front, so buses would go first, get on out, so those kids could get home, then we would dismiss parents. If you have kids who attend next door over here, it's basically the same thing, the buses go out, then the parents follow out right after that, and that's the way it is at the majority of our schools, because you can't have kids doing traffic patterns back and forth, and it's currently the way it is at Struble itself. It's never been an ideal situation to have construction going on next year schools, but when we were looking at saving money and what we could do, we knew that we could build on the Taylor site, the PRE site, and the Struble site, and the buildings would fit, and that the traffic patterns would work. Yes, we did know John Rose was closing, but is it an ideal situation to have all your buses and all your cars basically have to go out through two exits, turn left, and get on the Banning Road in some manner? It's not ideal, but it's something that we knew would work when we first looked at those properties. So, we had a suggestion at a board meeting, and I think Chris is the one that actually brought it up, he was aware that the land was available, so we put Chris McKee and our attorney, Kevin Mailoff, on checking out the property to see what's available, they are interested in selling the property, they are interested in dividing it up, but we have been very clear for them that we're not willing to spend extra money to buy the property, we're looking for a donation, or a $1 fee to trade the property, whatever we can do. If you go back to that first piece that was up there, Chris, if you don't mind, what are the advantages of acquiring the site? Well, one is avoid constructing the new school on the Struble site, it's going to be very difficult, as Karen and I have talked, to have K1 and 2 kids look outside their window and see big Tonka trucks driving back and forth in their mind. We knew that was going to happen, though, so it's not a legitimate excuse, I'm just telling you one of our concerns. We want to avoid traffic congestion, well, Todd, why didn't you know about this beforehand? We did, we did know that John Rose is going to be closed, we did talk to our transportation director, he feels like the buses and the parents can both go out of there, so that's all still true, none of that has changed. The new site contains more acreage than the Struble site, and will further the district's goal of showcasing the new schools within the community, the new site will allow the sale of Struble site to a developer... The new site will allow the sale of Struble site to a developer, resulting in additional cast to the district. I am 100% behind Robert and his suggestion. We don't want to leave empty land there. I think the board's been on that page from the very get-go. We're seeing what's happening over at Beavis right now with a vacated building. We agree 100%. I want to see Colrain Cardinals, Northwest Knights continue to grow their programs, athletic fields, or anything we could find to get over there. We are also trying to find developers above and beyond the township of what we could do for that property. We are looking, well, we'll help the district 10 to 15 years down the road. It's not just Todd sitting here, it's just not these five board members. What kind of place do we need to be in? So whether we're, we're going to keep the Struble property or look at the Mercy property, we are going to put a committee together that is proactive in looks. Where do we need to be in the future? White Oak's only going to last so much longer. I mean, Northwest looks pretty darn good, but it was built in '72, and we've gotten 40 good years out of that, plus. Colrain High School, I believe, is '62, '63?
Sixty-four.
Yeah, 64. So eventually, these buildings are going to need to be replaced, but as I said at Colrain, you're locked. There's nowhere to put it. We've got to have additional property in order for, in order for that to occur. Some financial things, we do know that if we're going to use the Mercy site, we have to do due diligence on the site. We know that it'll cost Phase One and environmental is about 4,500, a survey's about 3,000, geotex 800 to 2,000, title search is another 12,500. We know our price is there. Cost of acquiring the site for Mercy, the district will consider, only consider acquiring the new site if the net cost to the district is $0. One of the following options will likely occur, if that's the fact. Mercy agrees to donate the site to the district. This would allow the district to sell the Struble property for cash or ground lease to a developer, resulting in a net gain to the district. Mercy agrees to accept the Struble property in exchange for the new site and find out again what they would put there, because that is important to us. We do not want empty land sitting there because we are just concerned with Colrain Avenue down this end as everybody else. We want more houses. We want enrollment to increase. We want people to move into our community because of great academics and new schools. We'll explore additional cost, but that's basically where we are. Now, how are we going to deal with this and do it the right way? My job is to gather information for U5. So Kevin thinks we're close to knowing if there's any chance of deal whatsoever or not. I can say five days, it may run to 15. I could say seven, it may run to four. What we're going to do is set up nightly meetings in the community to get feedback from the Weigle parents and the Struble parents who will be attending school there to see what their input is. We're going to attack things like what would the additional cost? Chris is already working on that. If we do go to the Mercy site, what's the availability there? We do know that whatever decision we make, it will not interfere with the opening of school in August 2018 for any reason whatsoever. I think we'll have a real close decision here in the next two weeks, but if you hold me to that, I might be in two weeks going, okay. So we will get a decision as soon as we can, but we are going to go up, go ahead and set up evening dates, get feedback from the community. I'm going to put out surveys. We'll develop a link where they can go online if they don't feel like filling out or telling us what they feel their opinions are in person. Some people are intimidated by that. We want honesty. We don't want intimidation. So we will give them several forms to give information and feedback to us, and then I will present it to the board if we come down to the decision of the Mercy sites available or the Struble site and the decision you have to make. I really honestly hope we have a decision to make, because that means it's worked out well for the district in a couple ways. Maybe in terms of getting a developer for Struble or acquiring the Mercy site for basically nothing, but we are just as concerned about the community as everything else. But it'll be our job, Chris and I, to get together, provide you with good feedback and information from the parents in those communities, and not only the parents, but we will invite community members also to see what their feeling is. So that's the direction we're heading.
Todd, what is the acreage at Struble right now and then the Mercy site that we're talking about?
11.6 is Struble acres.
Yeah, about 17.
Seventeen for that bottom quarter. Will you put that picture back up, Chris? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
Chris, could you put that, when I did my presentation, could you put the picture back up, the Google map of the site?
She doesn't have those loaded.
No, no, the one that you had up before.
That right there?
Yeah, that one.
Yeah.
I need to point to it because I, and Mr. Martin, I agree with you. If that property stays vacant, that's trouble waiting to happen big time. And, and, you know, so we're, that, that, it's got to be, I would like to see if this doesn't happen, Mercy perhaps putting a retirement community back there. I work in Jerry psychiatry, and I know that the demographics are, look at all the new nursing homes up by you guys, the one in Liberty, Colrain, over on Huron Reagan Highway by Blue Rock. There is such a need because baby boomers like me and Chris, you guys, we're going to need places to go. But anyway, I had another little business right here, and that is actually North College Chilton, it had been Colrain Township. The owner, Mr. Oberg, headed the next by North College Chilton. He thought he'd get better police protection. Now you have to go down Colrain and over Banning to get there, and they never did, so we had worse police protection. But anyway, this lot right here has been for sale forever. It was a gas station back, Jim, I think it was at Texaco or something. And I just, if we do this, Todd, I can't imagine, I think this would be a great thing for the community to have this brand-new school, whatever design we come up with, because it's so close. I mean, it's 100 yards from memory lane, and it helps both sides with memory lane, you know, your side and the other side, which I think is declining perhaps even faster as you go to the Corb's Markham Hills and back from that area. So anyway, if we do that, I just can't imagine having this beautiful school here and then having a, you know, a Thorntons or something, not knocking Thorntons, but I just would really hope that somehow, you know, that we could incorporate this whole thing. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but before we want any further, to me, that's a deal killer. If we couldn't, you know, this is actually a private funeral home here, so it's just a small piece here. So that has been for sale forever, and I bet it'd be very cheap to get, but it's not part of the Powell Crosley estate. His house is here, his daughter's house is here. I actually put the TV system in. Sisters had me do the TV system in there, so I know a lot about this, and I've been in for the building. My dad got a ride by Powell Crosley when I was a kid. He was walking to Hughes High School, and Powell Crosley picked him up and drove him to school. So I've always thought good things about old Powell. And of course, what he did for Cincinnati and the community and the country with the war effort. So I just think it's a neat thing, but it's got to all connect, and we're not going to let that turn into a gathering place for problems. And so let's see what happens, but this is my concern right here, this little piece. And that's it.
Thanks.
I just want to point out, and I double-checked on Google Maps, I won't, I won't get there, but the, the neighborhood that you see with the backwards C, the inverted C, that's Burnside around the High Wood, that goes down, that's all Colrain, and then that, the annexation line is approximately that line that kind of cuts through Mercy, and that part was what was annexed out of Colrain into the city of Cincinnati. But, so we're up there, we're, you know, we're still in township, but there's also, you know, a decent-sized portion of neighborhood that abuts that property. Because my original concern is we would be on the Mercy proper site, we'd be a little, you know, we'd be that much closer to the edge of the district.
Okay, so you're going to keep us?
I'll keep you updated, and I will get back to you with any immediate information. I will also do posting on our website if something changes so folks know in advance, but I'll, I'll give you a final update on the March 7th board meeting most likely.
Todd, do you have any idea what the, they're asking for that corner lot?
No.
Do you have a look at that?
Our assumption is nothing or little is possible, but no.
Right.
We have not. I know if you talk about the big building where the hospital, they've spent $4 million to have that abated and torn down. So there are $4 million down there just to have that part abated and removed.
Well, I'm talking about the, what Chris was talking about, that the old gas station.
Well, I do not know, because we do not need that property to move forward, but we could check on that if the property comes to fruition.
Right. I mean, it would be a nice, another reassess point.
Yep. We're just waiting to see if we get the main piece first, but yeah.
You wouldn't have to go through the light to get into the property.
Right. Correct. Yep, we agree. The other thing I wanted to bring to everyone's attention is that Wednesday, we will interview for our design build. Pam and Chris are on the committee along with myself, Amy Wells, and Chris McKee, along with our attorney, Kevin Mailoff, and VSWC, who did our program of requirements for the architect. So at the end, do you want to go over anything or timelines from there, Chris?
Today was the day that all RPs were turned in, and we did receive all three, so we'll be prepared to start.
And our goal is to bring a recommendation to the March 7th board meeting and move forward.
That'll probably be based on our meeting with the state on Sunday, so we, we have to make sure that all the timing is correct.
Because remember, we're going through the ALP application and OFC, FC at the same time.
So the, the three that were, were turned in today, are those the same three that submitted the original?
Megan Skanska, Turner, and Shookston.
And they're paired up with the same architectural firms as well?
They're all paired up with different architect firms, yes.
Well, I mean, as in, same as the original, I mean.
Right. We're hiring a design build, and then that contractor brings in their architect that they're working with, yes. All right, 15-3. Wanted to just put this out in front of you. We were going to look to change our policy for BYOD, Bring Your Own Device student agreement. We want to get to the point where the use of technology is to provide educational material to extend and enrich our learning environment. So attached, you have a very rough draft on what the policy would look like. Our attorneys are currently looking it over. I believe he's got it to Isaac.
They've already.
Yeah, Isaac's looked at that, so he's approved it. This is vastly different. I mean, I think we were sitting here three years ago, and a teacher talked about cellphones being in loudness class as some free time, and we had some issues with cellphones going over there. Well, technology, technology has changed through our map data, through our school net, and help me out here, Brenda or Daryl, if I misspeak, but teachers have the ability to put five questions on the board as the students walk in, pull out their personal device, and they can answer the questions and have feedback immediately based on it. The school net allows them to go into their map data, so they can see. I taught number sense last week. My kids didn't get it, obviously, only 30% passed the assessment. I can reteach it, reassess them in a short amount of time, and using personal devices will help that. So we're talking laptops, iPads, and cellphones. There will be rules, and teachers will have options.
What's going to keep the kids from getting on other websites, walking around hallways on the phone?
We, we have green light and we have red light times, like other school districts have. Some teachers may not feel comfortable letting devices be used in their class, so when they walk in, you, it's denoted up here whether it's a class that allows them or it's a class that doesn't. I've been at Oak Hills, I've been at Secabour, I've been at Madera. All kids are in the hallways using them. They're not allowed in bathroom areas. Study Hall was the quietest study hall I've ever seen in my life. They had headphones on, some were listening to music, some were doing work, some were proactive with it. We would have to look at what websites we do block, but if you, if we think it's not going on right now, it's still going on. It's just we catch it after the point. But we can continue to say it's not a good tool, and, and I'm afraid our kids get farther behind, but it's a search engine, it gives them the most information of anything in the world. So we look at it as it's a way to move forward. So we surveyed teachers and staff. They gave us issues that we addressed here. We're looking for it for grades six through 12. We'll pilot it in one building for four and five, just to see how that goes, but we're mainly looking for six through 12. We're also looking at a one-to-one initiative where every child would have some access to technology. So we do not want to discriminate against those who are economically disadvantaged and can't afford it. So with Chromebooks and what we're doing with our purchases there, that should help So we will bring it to the next board meeting for action, but again, just let me know if any questions you have or concerns. I can probably answer them through the survey that we got through the staff.
I, I, you know, I think this is a great leap forward for the district. You know, there've been a lot of districts that had to pilot the BYOD devices themselves, and I think, you know, from that, we'd be able to see what's, what's working, what hasn't worked, and what kind of procedures and safeguards need to be put in place.
The, the one thing that allowed us to do this was our E-rate funds. We spent a lot, as Amy will tell you, on E-rate last year to get our buildings Wi-Fi ready to handle this, because the load will go up, but we think our connections and, it's just like your cellphone, it's getting cheaper and cheaper to have an unlimited data plan. Well, it's getting cheaper to have a gig hooked up to each building. I mean, prices are just going down, so.
And the E-rate, E-rate changed our policy a couple of years ago. It used to be like just for tele, like wired networks telecommunications, and now it's, you know, for districts can use it for their own, for their Wi-Fi internal.
Correct. Yep. Jim, did you have any other question?
No, no.
Okay. All right, that takes us to classified personnel, revised job descriptions, 15-4. You'll find six business department job descriptions being updated. Custodians, lead custodians, maintenance, skilled maintenance electrician, skilled maintenance plumber, skilled maintenance HVAC. This, again, is the human resources department working diligently to get our current job descriptions up to date with what they're doing. Some of them were very old, so I appreciate what Jack and Stephanie has done on this. I think mostly Jack. So the super, or actually, these are just for information, so we'll bring them back for approval next time.
Okay. At this time, we're in proportion of the meeting, community comments and questions. If any of you out there, including our Boy Scouts, have any questions about anything that you've heard tonight, now's the time you can ask. You don't have to come up to the podium. Does anybody have any questions? Okay.
All right, 17-1 is designee for public records training. Per higher revised code 109.43, a member of the Board of Education or designee must receive three hours of public records training for each term of office. The Board of Education designates Chris Langford for training on behalf of Northwest Local Schools. At the prerogative of the Board of Education, the recommendation is to designate Chris Langford for public records training for the current term of office on behalf of the Northwest Local Schools Board of Education.
Thank you, Chris.
I believe we need a vote now.
Wait. Okay.
So you need to be first and second.
Do we have a motion?
You'll probably see my wife there representing Colrain Township.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. It's been moved in second. Are there any questions? Motion passes five to zero.
The next is the Hamilton County Tax and Incentive Review and Council Designee. It's Chris's lucky day. Per ORC, the Board of Education would designate, must designate a representative to serve on the Hamilton County Tax and Incentive Review Council. The Board of Education designates Amy Wells and/or Chris Langford. At the prerogative of the Board of Education, we designate Amy Wells and/or Chris Langford for the Hamilton County Tax and Incentive Review Council for on behalf of the Northwest Local Schools Board of Education.
So moved second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? Okay, Chris?
Unfortunately, we did not have this in actual action items on this call roll, if you can take it that way. Mrs. Detschel?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mr. Detschel?
Aye.
Mr. Harlow?
Aye.
Mr. Heather?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, at this time, we'll move into board members' comments. Chris, can I?
Well, just a summation of what we've heard tonight, there's some really, really good things, and going back to Green Township, donating, making that contribution $122,000. It's a lot of dough. I mean, I know what it's like to try to get money for athletic things, just raising the money for the message board last year. So that's, that's fantastic, and that's a good thing. Irregardless, I want to compliment you, Mr. Martin, on your emails. You must have been an English teacher or something. What did you do for a living, sir?
I'm a law professor.
Okay. He, his emails are the, you know, you look at things, when sometimes their grammar's all over the place, and his are so well-written, and so, appreciate your interest, and we're not going to do anything that's going to create a mess back there for that community, and...
I want to be a positive, if I really do. I don't want to be lightning rod.
Yeah, so, but there's a lot of good things going on, and it's, it's been a, it's going to be an interesting next couple months, is it being?
Okay. Michael?
With all the positives going on, you know, I, I fear one positive getting overlooked, and that's the growth in our criminal justice program, and the second look that people are taking, and hopefully more will be taken at career technical education, it's, it's a different way of learning. It's not, you know, I work with a lot of career tech advocates, and, you know, we, they're describing, saying, this is not your father's shop class, and it's actually a heck of a lot more than, than shop classes. It's a different style of learning. It's hands-on learning. You can get college credit through the career tech courses. Certainly, it trains students very well for, for military as well. Sometimes students are walking out of here with an industry credential, and they are at the age of 18 or 19, making, you know, $15, $20 an hour, making good middle-class salaries. And, you know, in some cases, the, they're going up to the skyline and being waited on by the honor student that's still trying to figure out what they want to be when they grow up. And, it's, you know, the, the whole industry, his, the whole career tech education has really changed in the past 10 or 20 years. So, it's just...
Jim?
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on what Chris said about thanking Green Township. That is a really, really big donation that they're doing, and sprucing that up, and that's really going to be big for those kids, so they don't have to come over after school, and you possibly get more kids to come out for those programs, keeping it on campus. And like what Michael said about the criminal justice, I just wish the parents would just please check out Butler Tech, go up and check out these different places, the, the bioscience, the, the farm there with, that they have right in front of Monroe High School. I mean, everything is just top-notch, and it's a very good choice. And I just, my brother, who went through the vocational at Colrain, he graduated in 1973, you know, they, they got him a job right out of high school, you know? He ended up, you know, furthering his education, and that, and he ended up working for NASA. So, it's that kind of stuff that, you know, you see, you know, you can be very successful, and, and, you know, these kids coming out, making a lot of money, you know? Like, it's like the presentation we had last year from the engineering class, you know, those guys are coming out making $50,000, $60,000 a year, you know? So, it's, you know, everybody learns it, you know, at a different rate, different time, so it's a, it's a good option, just, you know, check it out.
Bob?
So many positives tonight. I mean, we had the Cub Scouts here, they were great. The football team was great. Thanks to, to Green Township for their great donation. We, you know, so much going on in the community, so many positive things. I think one of the great things that I, you know, we had tonight was Crystal and Turney coming in and showing the positive impact that they've had on the, on the students this year. Those are big improvements on her scores that she put up there tonight, and that's something to be proud of, that the school district is moving in the right direction. So, it was a great night.
Never mind a late meeting when there has so many great things that we had tonight. I just, again, just really like to emphasize, we, we've got to get the kids these mini presentations in front of middle-school parents, however we can do it. If it's before a band concert, if it's before the Christmas program, whatever programs there are, these kids are proud of what they do, and they, they sell the program themselves. And, that's how we're going to continue to build our program, getting those kids in front of middle-school kids and their parents. We talk about all the, I've already said about Green Township, they're, they're awesome. Two other things, I know Jim and I had a chance to go to Northwest Monte Carlo. Boosters work very hard in both schools. They provide a lot of man-hours, a lot of money.